Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular council meeting. It is six P M. Wednesday, May third, two thousand and twenty-three, and we are in council chambers. The only regret looks like we have tonight is councillor Downer is not able to make it. But we still have quorum and all as well. Including councillor Downer. So first I'll call the meeting order and then ask if there's any declarations of conflict of interest regarding tonight's agenda items. Seeing none. I need my land acknowledgement document. Who do they lend that to last time? Who did the land acknowledgement? You returned it, so perhaps it went in the drawer. It did. There's a drawback here in case anyone's ever wondering. Okay, so. This is not the one I was looking for. Talks about the. Old safety message. Okay, so we're gonna wing this one tonight. Oh, it's back here. Hiding behind the laptop. Sorry about that, people watching at home. Making you motion sick with my camera. So the town of Midland recognizes that it's located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Chinabik people. Now known as the Chippewa and Tri- Tri-Chippewa Tri-Council comprised of both the First Nation, Rama First Nation, and Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. The town of Midland also recognizes that it's located on land, which is a traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homeland of the Maitee. That our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. And I'd like to deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main entrance. Make it immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit. And up the stairs, check the door for heat before opening, and if it's safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right, proceed out the door in front of you. The washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area. And an elevator is located just outside of the main entrance. Sorry, I've got this up in front of the camera. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone that exhibits violence or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. And council meetings are recorded via Zoom. And are posted on the town's YouTube website. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel fifty-three. Having said, I'll just ask now for a moment of silent reflection before we get the meeting going. Thank you. All right, next our item of business is approval of the agenda. I have a motion moved here by councillor Emeritus, seconded by councillor East, that the contents of the regular council agenda for May third, two thousand and twenty-three be approved as amended. We do have some amendments tonight. One is that we're the removal of item twelve point one, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. This case CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-five. Correction CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-five. Town initiated official plan amendment and related measures to address changes to Ontario's planning framework at the request of staff. It's been pulled at the rest of staff will revisit at a later date. This was the subject of several emails from our development partners, who were also asking for some more time to contemplate the many changes that were outlined in the O P A. Also, the removal of the following bylaws under item eighteen point one, bylaw two thousand and twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-one. Adopt amendment number one to the town of Midland official plan. Bylaw two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-two required an applicant to consult with the municipality prior to making an application under the Planning Act. To repeal bylaw two thousand and thirteen dash eighty-four. Also, bylaw two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-three amend bylaw two thousand and twenty-two twenty-nine being a bylaw to provide for the delegation of administrative signing authority by council. And lastly, bylaw two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-four establishes site plan control area within the town of Midland under the Planning Act and to repeal bylaw two thousand and thirteen. Dash thirteen is meant it. So again, those are bylaws that were on the published agenda that are now removed. Subsequent to the pulling of the. Report CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-five. That being said, any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Up next, I have a motion moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Bald. That the items and related recommendations contained within the May third, two thousand and twenty-three consent agenda as consent items, having been considered by council, be adopted with the exception of two reports that were pulled tonight. Item five point four point one CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-six, the downtown sidewalk usage. And item five point four point four CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-nine councils two thousand and twenty-two. To two thousand and twenty-six strategic plan, which will be considered under section twelve, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for councils consideration, which includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. So as usual, this means that the items that have yet to or not pulled are all gonna get passed in one motion. And there are quite a few things on the consent agenda. Do any councillors have any comments about the things that are on the consent agenda that haven't been pulled? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Just in regards to the minutes of our regular meeting, April the twelfth. In item number seventeen point two. The motion should have included that it was going to be sent to M P P Jill Jill Dunlop as well.
Thank you. I do recall that. You just didn't make it in the paper. It either will happen or has happened, but we'll adjust the minutes accordingly. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, councils paging through there. There's a couple of things on here that for those that follow us online, you may be scratching your head, wondering what is this about? And one of them is correspondence for consideration, and it was basically we're adding our voice to the chorus of municipalities in the province. With some concerns around a decision that Enbridge has made. Or is in the process of making that will start charging third-party contractors and other utilities two hundred dollars for locate fees. There is a resolution that is worded in our agenda. I won't read it because it wasn't pulled. But this will be sent off to the province. Including M P P Jill Dunlop. And it just adds her voice in opposition to this. Now, some fresh information that came this evening by emailed. It looks like that perhaps the original stance by Enbridge. Is now being walked back to some degree. I don't know that's to full to full extent, but they've made some concessions. Nonetheless. There's still a plan to start charging for what has always been free, which is why this was included on our agenda and why we are. Unless anyone has an opposition to it, adding our voice to this course and in opposition, trying to keep this free service so people are encouraged, not disincentivized to call before they dig. So that's just a quick heads up on that one. And the Georgia Bay Cancer Support Center put in a letter looking for. Basically, a waiver of rental for the pickleball courts at Tiffin Park. For in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars because they have a quite a renowned tournament coming to town the same day as Butter Tart, June tenth. And they were just looking for a little relief from that. And as a funding source, in case you wonder, hey, where does this money go and? We propose to, you know, midstream wave a fee. This is coming out of. Council's pot. We have a little pot in the in the. Approved budget that allows us some discretionary spend on things. So this is us coming out of our collective pot to to give this forgiveness. We get approached for a lot of things like this council. And by default, the normal staff position is we don't waive fees for things like this, that there's a fee schedule on purpose. We need that. And it sets precedence. This is one. For whatever reason, I I'm glad staff found a way to do this that. Made everybody happy and a compromise, and that's being included on here. So. That's. Will be approved, and we welcome the pickleballers. On Butter Tart Day, get some exercise to offset the sugar. Uh, those two are pulled no more maze on here. I don't usually walk down this thing, but there's a lot of stuff on this one that we didn't pull. So no, no more made. No one's compelling you to not whip out the lawnmower, folks. But if you're pollinator friendly and you don't have a pollen allergy and other to the people who live near you, then feel free to let her grow. For me, we're not gonna come and tap you with the ticket. However, I get it. There are people that don't want to participate in that or have allergies. Feel free to mow. You're not gonna. We're not compelling you to not mow for me. And then there's our our strategic plan got pulled. Accessibility. Oh, sorry. I know I got lots to say tonight. The multi-year accessibility transit plan, that was a subject of email we got. Concerned that this is the kind of thing that should be going to our accessibility advisory committee and rightly so slash seniors committee. Sadly, we haven't had enough applicants to get quorum to form this committee yet. It's not a mandatory committee, so we're not, you know, in trouble. It's just that we we've lost that important voice in our community. We just don't have enough applicants, and this is not a middle unique problem, but it's one we're plagued with nonetheless. So we have to. Get this trend, this accessibility plan that we are under a time deadline. We have to have one and has to be approved. When we can form this, and I will be optimistic. When we can form this committee. The committee is welcome to, and I would expect them to pull this plan because it's a big part of their marching orders. And look for any things that they're suggesting we change or ask questions on. Why is it in here or put some new things into it? This is a living document. So for the residents that wrote in concerned that we're passing this without any input. There'll be plenty of opportunity for that, but we just need to get this thing on the books. And then when the committee forms. That'll be probably the first order of businesses review this. And lastly, is our customer service request report is also on here, and that's a neat, a few stats. Believe me, there are a lot more stats than that one little table. But it just gives you a little idea of the kind of information we're collecting every time you send an email to service at Midland dot C A. Which is how we create a service ticket, and it gets routed to the right department to answer your question or to do an investigation or follow up on something. And we now can now produce some stats, so I'm I'm looking forward to seeing more stats as we move forward. So there we go. There's the long-winded walk down the consent agenda. Do any other councillors have any comments or questions? Or have I nailed it all here? Very good then. So that being said. Think I've had enough discussion on it. All those in favor, the consent agenda? Any opposed? Okay, that is carried. And further to that. Enbridge gas. Resolution, I now have a type. I thought I was gonna get away without reading it, but I do have to read it. Apparently, it's moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Bolt. Whereas Enbridge recently made an announcement of their intention to begin charging third-party contractors and other utilities two hundred dollars plus applicable taxes for utility locates where a field locate is required. And whereas third-party contractors include Ontario municipalities. And whereas these locate requests are only required as municipal Ontario municipalities have allowed utilities to use municipal right-of-ways at no charge to those utilities. And whereas this announcement of new downloaded costs will negatively impact the budgets of Ontario municipalities, which are already burdened. And whereas if Enbridge is successful in implementing this new charge, a precedence is set for other utility companies to also begin charging for locates. Therefore. It be resolved that the town of Midland strongly opposes these utility locate costs being downloaded to Ontario municipalities by Enbridge Gas and other utilities. And that the province of Ontario's Ministry of Public and Business Service Delivery make it clear that these costs must be borne by the utilities themselves. And that this decision be forwarded to Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery Khalid Rashid. Minister of Infrastructure Kinga Serma. Minister of Energy Todd Smith, Premier Doug Ford, M P P Jill Dunlop, the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. All those in favor. It's carried. And next, further to, I guess I could have talked about all this then, moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Bald. The council receives the request from Cathy Wolfher on behalf of the Georgian Bay Cancer Support Center dated April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. For a waiving of the rental fee for the pickleball courts at Tiffin Park in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars and the. And in the event of inclement weather, the indoor courts at the North Simcoe Sports and Rec Center Committee Hall in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. And the council approves paying the rental fee on June ninth, tenth, and eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three for the Butter Tart Challenge Pickleball Tournament from council's administration's budget. All those in favor? That is carried. Next, move by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Ball, that council resolve into committee of the whole. Those in favor? Is carried. Deputy Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you, worship. Good evening to council, staff, and guests in the audience this evening, and for those watching on virtual. We have ten items this evening for the community as a whole. And I'm going to begin by. The first agenda was. There is no public meeting or hearing this evening. And moving on to presentations, there are none this evening also. And. There is no integrity. Commissioner recommendation report to see this evening. But we're on to item number ten, which is deputations. We have two deputations this evening. And. Just a reminder to council that we will have a presenter. We will listen to the presenter. And if there's any questions after the presentation, we can ask the presenter. For clarification on the on the presentation. So with a warm welcome to invite. Miss Frida Baldwin to present to council this evening. She's going to be speaking about the Ganaraska Hiking Trail Association. This has been on the back burner for a while. She just wants to update and ensure that council is aware, and we can move forward with her proposed. Recommendation. Ms. Baldwin, you have ten minutes to present, and we will feel some questions from council after or for clarification or just questions. So thank you very much for coming, and you have the floor, Ms. Baldwin.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name is Frida Baldwin. I'm a Midland resident. And I'm here with some members of the Ganaraska Hiking Club, including the president of the local Midland Club, which is Larry Pitts over there. I brought for you a presentation about our organization and why we are here, which is basically to ask permission to proceed with something that was approved in two thousand and thirteen. But which we did not proceed with because we were waiting for other municipalities to have their ducks in order to be able to. Create a trail through Penetang Machine and Tiny, and that is now moving forward. So we would like to ask again your approval to proceed with what we had intended to do. Which is create a trail along the waterfront of Midland and. And it's basically consists of blazing the trail of what is already there. We are not creating anything new. We're just putting paint marks. On poles and so to show our hikers where the Ganaraska Hiking Trail is. So may I ask who's doing the slides? Okay, thanks. Could you go forward? Thank you. So as I mentioned, Larry Pitts is here and then myself, and we have about a hundred members in the. Then chapter of the Ganaraska Hiking Trail, of which sixty percent are from Midland, actually. Yeah, so the Ganaraska Hiking Trail is a five hundred kilometer trail all the way from Lake Ontario to Glen Huron, which is near Collingwood. And the trail is entirely maintained by volunteer clubs, and we have nine clubs, Midland being one of them. The trail is located both on public land and on private land with permission of the landowners. An organization is actually a not-for-profit charitable organization founded in nineteen sixty-eight, so we have already celebrated our fiftieth anniversary. We have a five million dollar general liability insurance, which covers all landowners on whose land the trail is located. And we will be able to issue a certificate of insurance to Turnham Midland if you so desire. As a club, we have a hiking schedule, but we also paddle, cycle, snowshoe, cross-country ski camp, and have social events, and our membership is twenty-five dollars a year. So these are some pictures of what a blazed trail looks like. You will see those paint marks in white on the on the trail there, two by six in size, and we have two volunteers there putting. The paint marks on. When we go over private land, we usually put a sign there that we do this in with respect for the landowner, that it's a privilege for us to be on their land. And that we will take care of the land that we are crossing. And the other pictures are just pictures from along the trail. So the purpose of the deputation, as I said, is to ask permission to proceed with something that was approved in two thousand and thirteen, which was to create a trail or blaze a trail rather from the Y River. Via the paved trail and along the Rotary Waterfront Trail to the and via the town docks and along the mid pen link to Murray Road and Penetang Machine. So that permission we got in two thousand and thirteen, but as I mentioned, we didn't implemented it right away because we were waiting for Penetang Machine and Tiny. To form a route. So. As I mentioned, blazes are two by six rectangles on trees, poles, fence posts, and so on. Or sometimes we will also put on PVC lasers, and that's a common wayfinding system that is used by many long-distance trails in North America, including. The better-known Bruce Trail, but also the Appalachian Trail in the U S, the Oak Ridge's Trail near through the Oak Ridge's Marine and so on. And that's what our blazes look like, paint marks. One blaze means the trail goes straight ahead. If there are two, then the higher blaze shows the direction that the trail will take. So if it's a right-hand turn. The places will be like for me, right on this side. If it's a left-hand turn, it will be like that. The blue marks are actually side trails. And we ask people to stay on the blaze trail, not go off it on private land or other land. And this is a picture of the entire trail from Port Hope and goes up to. Peterborough, Sadoa, Seabright, Aurelia, Berry, then to a Sega Beach and Midland, tiny. Yes. But there is a gap at the top, so that which is between the Y River and the tiny trail at concession twelve. So that's what we're trying to close this gap. By forming a route along the Midland waterfront and the mid pen link to Murray Road. Then Murray Road to Thompson Road. East and west. And then along the Thompson Road. Where there's a new multi-use trail being built as we speak, so that will give us an access to the Thompson Forest. And we can go through there to Overhead Bridge Road, and then from there to the tiny trail. At behind King Fisher Road. So in tiny, we received approval from council a while ago, and they allocated a budget to build a set of stairs, which allows. Hikers and residents of the area to get down to the tiny trail, which is in the bottom of a valley. And those stairs were supposed to be built in October two thousand and twenty-two, but they're now being scheduled for June of this year. And in Penetang Machine, we did a deputation earlier this year, which was well received, and we just got approval this week to proceed with the blazing of the trail through Penetang Machine. So this is the proposed route through Midland, starting from the Y River along the waterfront on the paved trail. And then the mid burn link to Murray Road. So the benefits of doing so for the town of Midland is that you will be on the map of the Ganaraska Hiking Trail that attracts some end-to-end hikers and other hiking groups that will come here. To to hike if we have a mark through to that is properly mapped and so on. So it bring will bring tourists and. And. And our volunteers will actually blaze the trail, but also pick up garbage, which is something that we also did last week. We had a big garbage pickup between Pete Patterson Park and the waterfront. It was huge. It's. I will be happy that we did it, but it's so much cleaner now. So. Go ahead. There's a picture I think of it. So. That's us cleaning up garbage last week. So let's go ahead. So what we're looking for is approval from the town Midland to proceed and blaze the route, and then we can also provide that certificate of insurance if the town would so desire to have one. So open to questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Baldwin, for your presentation this evening. And I'm gonna open up to the floor of councils and see if there are any questions. I have councillor Post.
Okay, I forgot where I was. Thank you for your presentation, and I see no reason in the world we would say no. I definitely vote yes. I think this will be great for bringing people in and even giving people more knowledge of the trails and how far you can go. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Post. Are there any other questions from council, councillor Ball?
I just wanted to say thank you for doing that garbage cleanup because that looked like quite a feat, and that's amazing that you were able to do that, and I can't wait to walk on the trail. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions, councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. And I also appreciate the garbage pickup. So I have a couple of questions, but now that we're on the garbage, when you do that. Do you get assistance from the town for the disposal of the garbage?
Yes, thank you very much. I did work with operations, Mr. James Turnbull, who agreed to pick up the garbage once we brought it to the side of the trail, and they picked it up the next morning, which was exceptional, which was really nice.
That's good. And if I may, Deputy Mayor. Through you. I have two questions. One is the origin of your name. Little bit of history, why it's called the Ganar. Whatever.
It's a it's a mouthful. It's Ganaraska, and actually, it's a name that originated in Port Hope, where the first club. Was started and built a trail, and there's a Ganaraska forest there. There's a Ganaraska river, so that's where the name came from. And from Port Hope. The trail was extended. Through time, all the way to Collingwood area.
It's just not all encompassing, but. And my second question is the trail from Peterson Park where you. There's much cleaner Peterson Park now. Across the road to the mid pen link is the most difficult one to describe when people ask. Been asked on more than one occasion, how do we get to Penetang from here? So your markings should make it easier.
Yeah, once people are familiar with our blazing, they will find a way from Pete Patterson Park to the beginning of the mid pen. A trail, they will see the white blazes on post and so on. Yeah, there is no. My. If I may say this, the the path that is there now is very narrow and really should be widened. It's not very safe. So I'd like to see the town take some. Put an effort into making it wider, so it becomes a real multi-use trail that is properly marked.
Actually, the the parking there has increased in size this spring from what I could view. The parking for if you want to just park from the beginning of the Penn Mid Trail.
It it. Yes, sorry, I wasn't understanding that you were talking about parking. Oh, but yeah, there is some parking there probably for five to ten cars, something like that.
But you think that the entrance trail isn't too narrow?
No, I was referring to the trail alongside Harborview between Pete Patterson Park and the lights at at Bayport Road. Okay.
Thank you.
That's a narrow path for multi-use.
Yes. Thank you. I look forward to. Covering some ground.
Thank you.
On your trails.
Thank you, councillor McDonald. Are there any questions from any other councillors? Yes, your worship.
Thanks for the presentation, Frida. Far be it from us to leave a big gap on this map in Midland, where there's like no connector. That makes no sense at all. The fact that this was previously adopted by another council, you know, many years ago, and yet to be done. Good for you for persevering, following up with tiny and Penetang Machine. And closing your own gap and getting this thing done. So the cost of Midland, no, nothing. That's that's a rare ask, but that's fantastic. But anything we can do to help with that, because active transportation in our trail systems is really important to us. And became more important as people emerged from COVID and really embraced outdoor recreation space. So wholeheartedly support this. Let's get that white. Paint on the map showing that there's no, you know, contiguous issues with Midland and. Good, good work for the cleanup. Thank you very much. There's a bunch more down by. That we're we're working on. We got photos from folks, and some of it is kind of hazardous. You need to be careful because of Sharps and other other refuse. So anyway, we're having that cleaned up. And it's just, it's an unfortunate reality. I was just down today in Toronto with the homelessness symposium, and encampments are are just a reality of every community, urban, rural, big, small. So thank you for doing what you did in cleaning it up. And I look forward to seeing these trail blazing marks in the trees, and I'll have to dust off my hiking boots and go for a walk.
We'll take you on a tour if you wish.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Are there any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Baldwin, for your information and hopefully that we'll have a better signage for the trail system in this area. And it's a growing market for hiking on trails. So thank you for your sharing of information. Have a good evening. Your worship.
Sorry, one quick thing you'd mentioned about the liability. Would just double check with Julie Ellery with the town and just see whether we need to have a certificate on file. I suspect the default answer is yes. But just confirm that and we can tie the knot and then you guys can go about hammering these things and gluing them on or whatever. However, you fix them to the trees.
That should not be a problem to obtain that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to the next deputation. I have virtually a gentleman called Mr. Tony Pickett, the Chair and Executive Director and on the Board of Directors for the UNESCO Georgian Bay Geo Park. I myself have been involved with this for the last number of months and there seems to be a strong progression is awareness and understanding about the Geo Park of Georgian Bay and it's quite, quite large. So I'm going to invite Mr. Tony Pickett to do his presentation. And Tony, you have 10 minutes for your presentation. And after you're completed, we'll open up the floor for questions or clarifications on your presentation. So I will hand the mic to you in Toronto, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor and Mayor Gordon, councillors. Thank you for this opportunity. In September 2021, I had the privilege to present a report and recommendation to the Town of Midland Council. And that at that time, recommending that the opportunity for Midland to be a gateway and a real access point for this idea of a global Geo Park in Georgian Bay was an excellent one. And I got full endorsement at that time to proceed. I'm here to update you on the progress that we've made and the opportunity that it represents. And finish with three simple asks in terms of how we can best move forward. So if you go to the next slide, I think it may make sense to quickly recap what on earth Geo Parks are. And they are a UNESCO designation which now exists in 46 countries, 170, more than 170 of them. But they're not traditional parks. They don't have fences or ticket booths. They are large areas that encompass towns and parks, different spaces and resorts and you name it. They do not have any fees attached to them. There are no restrictions on land. They're composed typically of multiple sites. These days in more modern ones, they're very much web-enabled. And critically, UNESCO looks for and is essential that communities really support them. And the evidence is that they do on a number of fronts. Next slide, please. Also, as you look around in the feasibility study that we did showed it that they are proven tourism and business generator. The Geo Parks create opportunities for tourism that is generally described as geo-tourism. It can influence boating or cruising, enhance festivals that exist or generate new ones and even generate ideas for geo-products and foods. But suffice to say, they are an excellent platform for research and education, but very much beneficial to the community on an economic development tourist front. Next slide, please. A quick update, since that time, we have been designated by UNESCO as an aspiring Geo Park. From their point of view, we are a bad con, but a rock star when it comes to the geology of this part of the world. So that we deserve an aspiring status, which means we are well positioned to go through a very extensive process to get that UNESCO designation. We've developed a very significant citizen working group across Georgian Bay with really strong representation here in the Midland Pennington Machine region. We've raised development capital at this stage to move forward. We've incorporated as a not-for-profit. We've developed a website, which I would invite you to visit if you haven't seen it. We have started an extensive outreach to First Nation and Métis communities, of which there are more than 30 across all of Georgian Bay. We have partnered with the University of Toronto and a team of really extraordinary geologist experts. And they have developed more than 100 Geo sites across Georgian Bay, which are basically the showcase for the entire region. Included in their work has been the development of eight educational modules, which are already being used by schools and have also been funded by the federal government to do shoreline research using drone-based LiDAR. And that's the picture in the bottom right-hand corner. Incredibly detailed work that can enhance people's understanding around conservation efforts and different research activities. If you go to the next slide, please. As I said, the underpinnings, so to speak, of the park are Geo sites, of which now we have more than 140. You can actually see them on our interactive map on our website. These are not only sites that are purely geological and the stories are told around those aspects of it, but also point to attractions, established destinations, parks and the like, so that it ends up being a really rich map, as it were, of different regions of Georgian Bay and the types of things you can discover and learn that. Go to the next slide, please. The region of Georgian Bay fortunately is also characterized by distinct geological stories in different regions. As you can see, the numbers one down through seven and eight are characterized by really different phases of geological history. The first one in the North Channel being 2.4 billion years old. So fortunately, what this does is allow us to identify seven distinct regions plus the bay itself. And for each of those regions, there is a really unique narrative. A story not only of geology, but the culture and history that has emerged from it. And these represent really significant opportunities for each region to have its story enhanced and really showcased in ways that are in some, in some sense, new and potentially quite attractive for various reasons. And that includes, of course, the region that we're talking about, yours. So and I might add here that we are using the concept of deep time. And for each of these different regions, there is a really deep story. If you go to the next slide, please. We believe, as we did back in September of 2021, that Midland-Nor Simcoe area is a genuine portal to deep time and a microcosm of the entire Georgian Bay Geo Park. In many ways, it's the deepest story of all, where you do represent the critical aspects of this amazing geological narrative. It's a showcase for not just geology, but as the experts will tell you and UNESCO emphasize, that geology has had a huge influence on how habitation, history and culture have emerged over, well, as far back as 12,000 years. So it's a wonderful microcosm and gathering of all those things. And of course, the Midland area is so deeply rich in history. So an extraordinary story and Midland's position as a gateway and a showcase put you in such a very favorable position, as it were. Next slide, please. The opportunities that emerge from this begin with how the story that comes from the geological narrative and what we are revealing through this work to enhance how Midland is branded and marketed right now. Other areas around the world have found this to be a really rich framework that can help the story of the region to bring news and new levels of interest and curiosity from both the community itself and from others outside. There's been, there's clear evidence that it can be a catalyst for things here that are really important. Business engagement being one. New geo-tourism and we have a whole tourism framework that might, that I'm sure will be useful in the Midland area. Waterfront innovation and investment could be sparked by this. Boating and cruises are so critical in this area. So the Geo Park narrative and the things that come out of it can reach those activities. Incentives for hospitality investment. It can also influence current festivals as well as generate new ones. And importantly, be a platform and a very concrete one where collaborations with Bosley First Nation and Métis communities can really be progressed. Go to the next slide, please. And much of this is going to be enhanced or showcased through an app, which we are already developing and anticipate having the first iteration completed in the, by midsummer. But this app would showcase this region and all of the sites on it. It would include routes from A to B. It could very well incorporate existing trails, such as the one we just heard about. But also importantly, provide links to local businesses, to events and activities that are being planned or happening at the time, to conservation groups, to educational opportunities and the like. So it's a very, very effective tool, which is going to make this accessible and useful from the point of view of community citizens as well as visitors. And it will, all of the regions are going to, if you go to the next slide, be anchored by a a showcase or center. Now, we have been partnered for two years with the Midland Cultural Center, who have worked with us, partnered on LiDAR research, as well as been host for an event that we held last summer. And would be a great candidate for this. It's suffice to say that every region will end up with a location that is the centerpiece where information can be showcased and people visiting or people from the community can use it as a springboard to explore and engage with the Geo Park in the region. So with all that quickly in mind, I'll top line what we hope you would consider in moving this forward in the region. Given that you've been leaders in this regard, next slide, please. We would like to explore the opportunity to further move this forward in engaging with the community and explore what we would describe as a soft launch in 2023. That would be, and we'll get into that in detail, some questions later. We would like to have your agreement that we engage with the town administration and discuss the opportunity to see where we might get some help in areas like communication or site identification and links to business. And finally, we would ask for consideration down the road for a letter from you that expresses your interest and support in the further development of UNESCO Global Geo Park. So that is it in a nutshell. Clearly, we all believe that Georgian Bay is a global treasure. And without a doubt, Midland is a vital part of that story and positioned in such an ideal way to both benefit and lead in a fashion. So thank you for your time. I would be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett, for your presentation. It's nice to hear how the progression of the Geo Park is moving on the global scale, because it will involve the global in terms of visitation, inquiring about education through the internet and the future of the roles of the Geo Park. At this time, Mr. Pickett, I want to open it up to the council to ask any questions or comments or clarification on your presentations. I'm going to ask council, are there any questions from from either the members here to Mr. Pickett's presentation? Your worship.
Thanks for the presentation tonight. I'll admit, I got a spoiler alert. We had a kind of a a longer version of this one because it couldn't be contained to 10 minutes. And this has been a work in progress now for several years and COVID, surprisingly, you know, didn't take the wind out of their sails. Well, I mean, did to some degree, but here you are still, still going strong. And when this was first pitched to council, for those who followed, you know, last term, you know, one of my concerns, and I think it was probably shared by more than just me, was, you know, the costs of trying to become a Geo Park and what it costs to remain a Geo Park once you've got that designation. And it still amazes me that all this work is being done by volunteers. And we really don't have any real financial skin in the game yet. And yet this is, this ball is moving and gaining momentum. When I, you know, we got a spoiler alert because you did the same presentation in Pennington Machine and the takeaway, at least from what I read in the paper, is Pennington Machine's licking their chops at being the epicenter for North Simcoe for the you know, the discovery center there. So I can, I detect some friendly rivalry between us. But really, I think about this in all seriousness, like a you know, hands in a glove, right? I mean, which finger on your hand is more important than the other? This is really a North Simcoe initiative. And when I think about the four, arguably five, because part of Georgian Bay Township, we're all in this together as the launching point for, for the Geo Park for visitors. So we all stand to gain immensely from the international, you know, clout that we'll get as being a Geo Park and as the launching point from our municipalities. And to me, honestly, regardless of where it ends up, if it's Pennington Machine, Midland, Tiny or Tay or we're all going to win from this. So I really appreciate the fact that, you know, there's a picture of our Midland Cultural Center and that that's sort of been your hub for now. But I just want to temper the reality that, you know, there's no automatic assumption that the hub will end up even in North Simcoe, because quite frankly, Owen Sound, Perry Sound, you know, all have equal claim to being a sort of a launch point into this. If, just wanted to make sure that that's still a sort of a correct assertion, Mr. Pickett.
Well, if I may, the regionalized approach to this includes the idea that in any given township or area of the Geo Park, there is an opportunity to create and it may be a very modest kiosk, but a place where people can learn about the Geo Park and be directed in a sense. Now, for each region, it makes sense that there will be a single substantial place. But we are now, we've got an architectural firm working for previous who are designing a kind of modular approach that can be considered from place to place. So it's a bit more flexible than you described, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you. That's good to hear. So then I moved to the financial part. Just for this council's edification to refresh me, when do, when do we need to open our wallets? When do we need to start putting money into a reserve? Because this is going to actually start to cost some funds. When can we expect that? And what, how much will it be approximately?
Well, maybe that's a, that's there's no cookie cutter answer to that. What I propose is that we, we itemize the kinds of activities which we've already defined in terms of further introducing and engaging the community. That's going to have certain activities like communication, there may be events and so on. And right now, the cost to the Town of Midland will be zero for this year, let's say, but there may be some time required from the town to participate. What we would do is co-plan for further years out and find out what activities you would be prepared to support in the context of your economic development and tourism budgets. So it's the municipalities in other Geo Parks very wildly. In, in the Cliffs of Fundy, there are eight or 10, and each of them takes a modest In in uh the Cliffs of Fundy, there are eight or ten, and each of them takes a modest um uh role. At in Whistler, which is a massive park and you've got a big municipality, they have funded a lot of it over the years. So it it's all very circumstantial.
Okay, not, it's not exactly giving me a a timeline of when we could start pu- putting money into a
Well, I think, I I think honestly, what we would want is to put some money aside for next year.
Okay, so this is something between now and then uh you working with staff to start and decide what we need to look at putting in our budget. Because as you can appreciate, we have a lot of pressures, but this is a really economic driver and and it's not gonna happen overnight, so.
No, that's right.
Thank you. I I appreciate you uh humoring me with my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, uh your worship. I have Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you, Counselor Meredith for reading. Um, thank, and thank you for the education, Mr. Pickett. I'm I'm not familiar with the concept. And I'm hoping that maybe you could educate me a little bit more by perhaps describing the most, you you mentioned there was a hundred and forty Geo Sites. Uh, could you describe a typical site or the most popular site? I was to go there, what would I encounter?
Uh, well, uh, a s- a site would be anything from um, for example, Giant's Tomb, you know, site. And if you go online, you will find a photograph of Giant's Tomb, um a GPS map so that you can see its location and some of its water feet, and you will have uh a robust paragraph describing both the geology and the historical context of the place. So in a way, Geo Sites are mapping places that exist now, but there is not necessarily anything physical there other than the geology itself. Um and and they range from the limestones out in the middle of Jordan Bay to uh Giant's Tomb to outcrops that you might find here and there. And we're currently identifying even new ones here in the region in in uh North Simco. And again, they could, they could be a beach because geologically speaking, uh the beaches have uh uh real significance and they are very, a very big part of the story here in Jordan Bay. But we, I'm sorry, uh, counselor, I would also add that the Geo Sites, we also have related sites of of significance. So those would be um the Y Marsh, um Discovery Harbor, uh Saint Maria Among the Hurons, all of them have a story that have a link to the way the geology has influenced either the ecology, culture or history.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. I have Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Conton. Um, uh, thank you for the presentation, uh, Mr. Pigot, Pijot. Is that how you pronounce?
Pigot.
Um, I had the pleasure of attending, um, I believe it was your presentation, uh, the Geo Park presentation uh last summer. Center, and I found it very interesting. Um, the one question uh I have, what is when you designate um lands for the Geo Park, uh are they or could there be lands that you designate that are private lands? And how would if, if if so, how would it affect that uh private land owner?
Uh, we we would not be identifying a Geo Site on a a private property um just as a a rule. But if there was a site that may be brought forward to us by people who um are proud of a particular geological formation, we may add something. There are, there are property owners that have pretty big tracts of land. And uh it may be that they want showcased, but uh generally, we would not be identifying places that aren't private property.
Thank you. And one follow-up question. Um, when we're, when we're looking at costs for um for the uh the township of of Midland, is there any Geo Park right now that is um uh that you already have uh on the books that compares to the size of Midland and the cost that um um that it entails?
Well, that, I would have to get back to you, but we have uh research of the Canadian Geo Park experience that gives us a range of costs for actually bringing a Geo Park to a point of development where designation occurs and then the operating costs. And they vary because, due to the size. So I'd be glad to send you some information that's actually in the original feasibility study which the town would have, and I can send that to you, and you'll get some sense of the range of costs. But that, but I must say they're, they're not born entirely by a municipality. Our funding comes from different sources.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Meredith. I now have Counselor Post.
How good it works this time. Um, I thought I understood what the Geo Park meant, and now I'm confused. Um, so if we were to be part of it, it would put us on the map. So when somebody Googles Geo Parks, they would, Midland would come up and all the amenities we have here, uh the shrine, restaurants, everything. And with no disrespect at all, but is that not the same as what we find in Google? I know it's not part of the Geo Park part, but is that it's the same information we could access otherwise?
Uh, I think there will be some overlap, but what what uh the UNESCO Global Geo Park does was invite people into understand a a story that represents and and showcases why a particular place is unique and important. And then navigates you toward these particular spots and tells you more. Brings you um up to speed on its geological significance, the links to culture and history, and then the links to services, business events and so on. So in effect, it's adding layers of information and I think positioning both the region and these individual places in a way where people can genuinely grasp the uh the importance um and the levels of interest that they deserve. That's what UNESCO is really about is is, you know, these places are special in the world. And I think it's being able to present them in that fashion that distinguishes us from the kind of commoditized search that you might get through Google.
Right, so it's more like like one-stop shopping. You get all the information you could possibly want if you're planning to go somewhere and learn something or experience something.
Yes, it's through through it all, through the website. You you can also access, we're going to have a um educational services there, which I alluded to but didn't get into in depth. There's research that we're already doing and we will be uh bringing together other sources of research so that academics and researchers can use the website to um in enhance the way they are doing their work, like the stuff with the LiDAR um that we're operating around. So it's really how um it's it's brought together in the context of a very rich and I would say highly credible framework uh around UNESCO and Geo Parks. The 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 designation has stacked or adds some little bit of a similar interest.
Okay, thank you. And I would also be interested to, when you can um let us know even a ballpark number, um what this would cost our taxpayers when you're able to bring that to us.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Post. Are there any questions? Counselor Ball?
Yes, thank you, uh, um Deputy Mayor. Um, I just wanted to uh let you know that um I'm very interested in this. I was a geologist for a long time. And so um I know that the uh, when, when the uh four hundred was being um uh the 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 road going up to Sudbury, uh it it uh showed a lot of the Granville front. So we see all the swirling um, you know, uh basically the the uh, it was, it was two plates that were um crushing each other. And so you can see that on the highway and so um, it's very interesting, so I will uh probably uh go to your website and see what you have there.
Well, you'll see that, you'll see that that um, that uh formation along the highway is a Geo Site. Um, so you can access that way and other ways, but it is a place where geologists from around the world come to to see something they can't anywhere else. Well, you you really must go to a website. As a geologist, you will find it quite fascinating and much deeper than what I've represented tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Ball. Yes, uh, your worship.
We made a few references to the website tonight. For those following along, there's a good video on really what, why is the why is Georgian Bay an aspiring Geo Park? That's on the website. For those following online, you visit georgianbaygeopark.com. GeorgianBayGeopark.com, that's the website. Uh, it is a very well-done website and lots of information, so uh it's a good read and there are some videos and pictures. You're not a big reader, uh but you should get an idea of what this is all about. And really, the only head scratcher so far is just what's this gonna cost for us to make this happen? Uh, as just one of many of the communities will be partners in this massive Geo Park project, so I'll look forward to that and uh I know it'll, it'll come. It's just good to know we don't need to worry about it for anything substantive anyway for the twenty twenty four budget because lots of stress is already piling up for it, so.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Are there any further questions for Mr. Pickett from council? Seeing none. Thank you, uh, Mr. Pickett, for your presentation. I know that uh there's lots of information that has been gathered and collected and projects going uh in the next couple of months. Uh, one was the project, projects is the LiDAR project for Collingwood area and uh in this area, potentially with uh the Huron Wenda archaeological sites. The one in Collingwood is gonna be fairly uh extensive just in terms of uh remapping uh the site. It goes back to about eight to eleven thousand years was a a formation of the early mining and that was done by the first people. Uh, so uh the funding came through National Geographic and uh through the uh, uh through a, through a program. Uh, and so we're, yeah, that's gonna be happening this uh summer, I believe, with the the University of Toronto of Dr. Kirsten Kennedy and the, under the guidance of Nick Isles. So, Mr. Pickett, thank you very much uh for your presentation. I believe that staff will get back to you for response for your ask. So thank you very much for sharing your information.
My pleasure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Thank you, Castlers. I hope to see you again.
Thank you. And that concludes the deputations for this evening. Like to thank Mrs. Baldwin again for being here. You have a good evening, ma'am. Uh, we're gonna be moving on now to the agenda. Uh, we're on to a number eleven, which is committee local board delegation or memo. There is none this evening. But we are now on to reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration, which includes presentation by consultants regarding a report under consideration. We do have a an item as twelve point one that was pulled by staff was the CSR dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five Town Initiated Official Plan Amendment and related measures to address changes to the Ontario's planning framework. We'll be addressing this at a later time. For now, it's been pulled, so we won't be discussing this this evening. But we do have two items uh under uh that we were removed from the agenda, from the consent agenda. Uh, we have uh the first one uh that uh deals with the the staff report CSR twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six uh downtown sidewalk usage dated May third, twenty twenty-three be received. And I do have a motion for this, but I'll read the motion after we have discussion. I believe we read the report. And if there are any uh questions or issues to be looked at uh by council, we'll address them now, so I'll open the floor for for this. So, uh, council, do we have any, any questions for staff on this? Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Conton. Um, so the question is, um, are we asking um that the businesses right now, they they carry a two million uh additional pay to the town of 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 Midland, whether they um have um items outside or uh on the, on the sidewalks or or not. Um, that's, I guess that is um only if they have some type of awning uh protruding on, encroaching on, on the property. Um, so are you asking for an additional insurance to have items um outside? And what type of items are you, are you, clarity on the items that like there's planters outside as we see now? There are, you know, small items close to the building. So what exactly are we, are we looking? And how far uh onto the sidewalk? Uh, so just some clarity on um on this uh proposed uh permit.
Thank you, Counselor America. Staff?
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is a pilot project that was brought to us by the BIA um seeking some assistance for local business members that are in the downtown area during uh the Butter Tart Festival when the cruise ships are in and and other times during the summer and spring and fall periods to allow the businesses just to kind of ease out onto the sidewalk to display some of their merchandise, bring some people in to perhaps uh spend some money in in their shops. We don't have a program in place at this point, so those shops do not have um certificates of insurance filed with the town, so we would be asking for that. The only ones that would have certificates filed with us are ones that have already sought encroachments for awnings and and other things where there are permanent encroachments onto the sidewalk area. This is a pilot project so that in future, we would probably be looking at maybe wrapping it into the outdoor patio program because of the similarities and asking them, you know, to apply and provide us with assurances by way of insurance. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Uh, Counselor, do you have any more follow-up then?
Yeah, thank, thank you. Um so, so I'm, I'm on the BIA. I'm a representative and and um I I don't recall that we were asking for that, so um for the Butter Tart Festival coming up and previous years, you had merchants, we had merchants on the sidewalk selling their products. Um, so were they not insured at the time? And now we're asking for insurance certificates, and that's what uh I got from uh the BIA chair that the town is asking for certificates of insurance for the butter, that everybody's in compliance for the Butter Tart Festival to have products outside.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. That is one of the asks, but the, the ask has also been extended to other times during the spring, summer and fall periods so that those merchants could extend out for more than just that particular day. Um, in past, we have not had the assurance by way of a certificate of insurance and have not had those protections. So this is just uh the town's way of ensuring that if there are issues with any of the dis- those displays, uh we would be protected from any liability.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Meredith. Another follow-up?
Follow-up to that, so if they, obviously, we're gonna, everybody's asked for two uh two million uh additional pay to the town of Midland for the Butter Tart Festival. So once those forms are completed and 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 the town is satisfied, then you wouldn't need to go back on any other occasion to have products outside, so um, like, are you asking for every time they have products outside that they, they fill out a request for, to have a table or or a planter outside and so forth? So this is where I, in the past, prior to Butter Tart, um, after Butter Tart last year, there's always been products outside, so. After Butter Tart last year, there's always been products outside, so. Now we're asking and and some have been insured because they have the two million liability already. And now we're asking them to pay up. You know, fifty dollars. Which is is a fee, probably a yearly fee, I I I'm guessing. And then that yearly fee is eventually going to climb up. You know, maybe five years from now be two hundred and fifty dollars. So. Is that just a one time fee and that's it? Or is it going to climb and climb and climb? I'm just not in favor of of of. Of dinging our small businesses with a fee to to show the town of Midland they have. The town as an additional payee on their policy.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This year, the pilot project would not require a fee. The outdoor patio program is due to be renewed and reviewed this fall. And for the coming season, so we would be looking at incorporating it into that and looking at what fees would be charged at that point. That would then come to council and then be debated and then put into. That particular program and the fees and charges by law at that point in time. The certificate of insurance that we would be asking for, if they're just going to do it for the one day. It would be a one day certificate. It's not an additional charge on their insurance. If they would like it to be extended for the entire season. It's simply just asking for the insurance for more than just that day. They would just have it. Marked right on the certificate of insurance that would be submitted, that it would be for the entire season from, say, April fifteen through to October fifteen. Which is how we do the ask for the patio program.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Ms. Allery. Are there any further questions regarding this item from council? Council McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Just in regards to the. Third recommendation that staff report back to council with the procedures for downtown sidewalk usage. Incorporated into the outdoor patio policy for April twenty twenty four. I I'm. So in twenty twenty three, there'll be no surveillance of the patio. Patios that are going to be out there, that they're structurally sound, that they're visually appealing, that they're safe. And that is my concern with the outdoor patio policy because I've seen some patios that are pretty. Lucy goosey for better lack of the word. Or a better lack of the description. I I think there should be some guidelines on how they have to be structurally sound. And not. Interfere with pedestrian park. Pedestrian traffic. And not take up too many traffics or parking spots.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Right now, the patio program is in place. Those patios are monitored. What we're proposing is that these downtown merchants. This summer would be allowed to put out merchandise type tables. And that in the fall, when we review the patio program, they'd be incorporated into that particular program. Because of the similarities, timeframes, things like that. And at that point, we would be considering what the fee should be for. That kind of display for the the other kind of merchants downtown outside the patio program.
Also, we don't have a follow up?
Thank you, just a follow up. So there will be no guidelines on the structure.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. There are already guidelines for the patio program. They've been in place for, I think, two, if not three years. So those patios are fully monitored by way of application process. They're looked at by the various departments. At this point, this, the only addition to that would be. This new edition of the merchants downtown that wish to put a display table up front for the various events that are. Happening.
I have an acting CAO respond also.
Through your deputy mayor. The patio program we put in during COVID. You know, it's downtowns, we're trying to become vibrant again, get people downtown. So we put a program in place. It was a pilot program. It had rules, regulations, fees associated with it. And at the time, we said we'd bring it back to council this fall to review it. If council believes those. Procedures, those, the elements of it are insufficient. When we review the the policy this fall, we welcome the comments if and if council wishes to. Beef up it, make it more stringent, we can do that at that in in the fall when we review the policy. In the meantime, though, they do pass the, you know, necessary safety standards. One you've noticed, let me know and we'll do an inspection.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from? Yes, Council Ball.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak about the liability, councillor Meredith. I personally had to add the town of Midland to my property based off of a grandfather structure. To have them as a liability on my insurance was an extremely simple process. It probably took ten minutes and my insurance company mailed. The paperwork right to the town. I think that those, all those businesses should already have that amount of insurance on their. Personal insurance policies. It's just a matter of adding a name on should be really simple for them to do, and I hope that that segues into. Being being able to have all the planters out and I know you and I went to the EDN CS presentation and. It was in a great presentation. It really showcased Midland as being able to. Have the opportunity to expand onto the sidewalks and create a very visual space downtown, so I hope that. The business owners are able to do that and that will create a really simple transition to being able to hopefully get on board with. More visual spaces downtown.
Thank you, Council Ball, for that information. I have his worship, Mr. Gordon.
So just in summary, this is free, what was being proposed because we're just putting this together. It's free for the first year. We try and, you know, work the bugs out of it if they're already. And what's proposed for twenty twenty four is fifty bucks, which is base, base, base cost recovery for the staff time to. Do the paperwork at the front window. Which, by the way, council sets those fees and approves them or don't, don't approve them in our twenty twenty four budget. So when we get that fee schedule. If that's something, you know, we want to eat, then we just say it's going to be free. But that's what's being proposed right now is this minimal minimal cost recovery for now. So it's not. We're approving it in principle effectively and we'll be approving it for reals when it gets to twenty twenty four budget time later this year. The insurance, it's an unfortunate reality. If you're going to do business activity on someone's land that isn't yours, in this case, it's a town. It's it's the necessary evil these days, so having the town, you know, indemnified against. Your planter falling over and stubbing someone's toe and then they sue. We're already hooked in anyway through joint and several, but this is, it's just one of those ugly realities. So it's not meant to be punitive. But the the flip side is I'm super excited to see all the sidewalk sales, the planters, the nice. Beautiful chairs that normally you'd have to go into a store to see. Now they're going to be outside, you know, weather dependent and the patios that get set up. And it is, it just does something. It brings a lot more life to our downtown core. So I'm looking forward to that and I I hope as many businesses. You know, choose to embrace this this summer and let's see what it's like. Not everyone has a business that lends itself to putting out tables, but. You never know. Let's see what kind of creative juices our our downtown merchants have. So I'm excited to see this program. Glad to see it supplement the patios.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Are there any further questions regarding this matter? Yes, Council Meritors.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. I I know exactly what councillor McDonald is referring to when she's talking about the patio structures. There was one patio that was. Pretty much, you know, their their barriers were leaning over and so forth last summer, so I I I think I know. What she's talking about there, but going back to the insurance, it's it's not, I'm not disputing that. The businesses should have. Insurance. I'm disputing we, the town of Midland, putting a cost to that. So which takes a little time to get the insurance and 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 mail in or email or the certificate. You know, clearance proof to the town, so to to tack on a fifty dollar charge, I I'm not in support of that and. Small businesses. Are right now, you know, I'm on the BIA. I talked to small businesses and whether it's fifty dollars or five hundred dollars, every everyone counts. So they're they're struggling right now. We are going into our busy season, so hopefully. You know, their sales can go up, but the cost of living has gone up tremendously and. So I won't be supporting any type of fee with regards to. This matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Meredith. Are there any further questions before I read the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to read the motion for for this. I have it moved by councillor Ball, seconded by councillor East. The staff report CSR twenty twenty three dash twenty six downtown sidewalk. Usage dated May third, twenty twenty three. Be received and that for twenty twenty three downtown merchants merchants who wish to extend. Their business onto the sidewalk at any point during. Must provide the town with a copy of their general liability insurance listing to town. Of Midland as an initial insured in the amount of two million and. That staff worked toward implementing a downtown sidewalk usage application. And free program for twenty twenty four and that. Staff report back to council with the procedures for downtown sidewalk usage. Incorporated into the outdoor patio policy for April twenty twenty four. All in favor, please raise hands. Those opposed? That's carried. Thank you for. That sharing your your thoughts and processes on this item. We are now going to move on to. The next consent agenda that was pulled. This is the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six strategic plan. And you read the report and I believe that I'm going to open this up now to council for any comments, questions. Regarding this matters. So council, are there any any questions? Council McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. I guess I was a little surprised to receive this report without any initial. Summary from the facilitator. I don't know why I thought we would actually get his comments before. Is one of my concerns and I was expecting another opportunity. We did this. Talked about it. I think it was almost a day and a half or two days. I would would appreciate, I guess this is the opportunity to review before adopting. The report does suggest that. We adopt the mission and vision statement as a draft. But that it doesn't mention that in the actual motion to adopt. So. And I don't have not have any idea what it's going to look like when it is posted on the website. Will it just be this report? It's. Too. It's not clear enough for me. On all the discussions we had.
Thank you, Council McDonald. Do we have a staff member like to respond to that? The acting CAO, perhaps?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to to Council McDonald. This is the. Time we talked about for councils to re debate and discuss the summary. So this reflects the the summary that was given by the consultant during the session. We we as a group brought it down to these specific items. What staff had to do was go away and well, what does that mean? And that's what table two. Or attachment two of this is, is, you know, what do we have in the budget? What are the different activities? We've already budgeted, planned to undertake. Need to undertake, haven't budgeted for, and then certainly as we go through a budget process. You know, work plans will will be amended, changed accordingly in the coming coming years, but we've identified. How. The priorities address the work plan that council's already given staff. And that's what's here. As far as the mission and vision, the report clearly states, we've got a new CAO. Coming hopefully this this summer, the second round interviews are happening later this week and by the end of the month. Hopefully, there's a candidate in the pool that council likes. If not, it'll be a longer period of time. But I didn't think it was appropriate for for myself as acting CEO to to put a final. Flavor in into the the mission and vision because that is something I think the the new CAO. Would have as a main priority and would, you know, I I told all of you, I'm. Hopefully retiring soon and, you know, to implement a a mission and vision is a culture change. And to have a culture change, the the leader would be the CAO and would hopefully it'd be a, you know, three or four year initiative. And also, you know, that that new leader that council hires. They might have some of their own interests. They'd want to add to it or flavor they'd like to add to it. So. I thought it'd be a bit presumptuous of of me as an acting. Person and as we debated in the discussion. You know, council, you know, what we wanted to get from council, what was the priorities? The mission and vision, we had a little bit more discussion, you know, we need to internalize that a bit more. We need to have a bit more discussion with staff, what it means to staff. And that's why in this I presented what. We came up with in our in our retreat. But not recommending that that council adopt that today versus the priorities. Those priorities are what council has heard from your constituents. What you have will give to me and staff who are here today and the new CAO. So I don't think. Who the CAO coming in will change what the priorities are that you have as council. So that's why I'm saying, you know, let's move ahead with the five main priority areas. Council is given quite a few ideas that are are highlighted. In attachment one, there's three or four bullet points against each of those and then. You know, I presented the work plan that's on our table right now in the in as a follow up that, you know. It might need more meat to it. Council might have some more ideas. But again, I think. What's in here is already what's in the budget, so adding more items I would hope we'd have as a discussion at budget time instead of. More work this year right now. But again, we're at the disposal of council. If you look at that list and you say, you know. Why did we put that project on the list? So to the councillor McDonald's comments, I I, you know, the the. Facilitator gave me a a report, but basically if you look at it, it was. I'll say something that wasn't fit for public consumption because it wasn't meant for public consumption, so it isn't. On the report, but I can certainly share that draft report. With council if that's what you'd like to see, but there's, it's really just. The slides that each of you, you know, where we got with the. You know, the full length of of issues before we selected it to a a shorter list. So it's not. I'll say it's not a report that I would put out to for public consumption.
Thank you, our acting CAO. I, you have a follow up, councillor McDonald?
Thank you, just a a follow up, yes. I wouldn't mind seeing the. The report. Just to satisfy my curiosity. At one, at some point when you have a chance to send it, but I guess my other concern is that it. Number three, the council revisit the priorities midway through the council term. We have some measurable goals there and I would rather review it yearly rather than just midway. True, our council, that means we said it. True, that means we said it, we look at it one more time and then our term's over. So I think it should be something, if my fellow counselors agree, something we can take a look at. At least where we're standing in a year from now, when we adopt it.
Is there a response from the acting C A O?
As far as reviewing the report addresses and suggests that we bring a regular report card, maybe quarterly back, so that attachment two, we already have it built into a type of scorecard with, you know, where where we at with each of those projects that we burden back on a regular basis to council. Certainly, council has the opportunity each budget cycle to, you know, address priorities. That's the whole purpose of of budgeting. And if council at budget time, you know, decided to spend money outside of those categories, that certainly would be the will of council at the time. So the the thought was we bring a facilitator potentially back in halfway through the council term. But, you know, before then, we would just, you know, work as staff and council to work towards these objectives. Because, as you can see, there's, you know, two million dollars worth of work here already without having two million dollars worth of budget for.
Thank you. I missed that part where there's going to be reports quarterly in this report. And this is facilitator midway through makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Are there any further pressing questions regarding this item from council? Mayor Gordon?
Thanks. A couple of comments. One is that these these are high level objectives, you know, they're not super granular. And the ideas, these are meant to focus us, not to restrain us. So the idea is that staff reports that come to council or council requests of staff should align with one of these high level goals. So we're not just, you know, listless going off all over the place. We've basically set ourselves five stars in a constellation, and that's where we're navigating the good ship Midland. So that that's effectively what we've agreed to do. Just for those following on at home, our priorities for the next two years are waterfront development. You know, we could do something with Midland Bay Landing. There's lots of appetite for out there from developers. There's still a, you know, a strong desire from people for recreational public space. So those are not competing priorities. They're they're priorities that this council recognizes and can coexist, and we'll find the right compromise. We want to stabilize and streamline our service delivery. That's the whole reason we exist is to deliver services to the community. And the next is our infrastructure management. As we already learned early this term, we have this massive staggering multi-million dollar infrastructure capital debt. Or, you know, it's not debt yet, but it's it's a hole that we need to fill with money to keep our infrastructure in place. So that's clearly one of our big strategic priorities. We want to enhance town safety, which should be a shock to no no one listening or watching online. And from a cultural perspective, we really want to make this this municipality, this corporation, an employer of choice. So that workplace culture, those are, that's the constellation that we've all agreed upon after those day and a half of of work. And man, it was a lot of work. And it was really well done facilitation wise. And this is what it boiled down to. So this is the, you know, five points that came out of pages and pages of ideas. And every, from what I recall, that was a really good session. I think we were all super aligned. There was not not one of us was madly off in some odd direction. Everybody seemed super aligned in this document, as small as it is, boils it right down to the the lowest common denominator. So I get it, this is a small read. When you looked at other, and you can just look to the past, at a strategic plans for councils in the past, they tend to be quite verbose, and sometimes there's pictures and graphs and stuff. It's multiple pages. But this, I think, is really boiled down to the nuts and bolts. This is what it's all about. And we can expect staff to, at the bottom of all these reports, tell you which of these initiatives, whatever the staff report is, aligns to. And you've probably seen that without even noticing it on the reports we've had thus far, because they reference the past council strategic plan. And this report is probably the one of the ones that doesn't have anything, no mention of that yet, because that's what this is. So anybody interested in learning a bit more about this plan or the way some of these things have been funded by staff, those are the attachments on here. Where we talk about, you know, initiatives we can do around waterfront development and streamlining our service delivery, et cetera, as well as some of the estimates that staff have plugged in and already highlighted plans that are in place, aligning them to which one of these categories they fit, as well as approximately how much money it's going to take to to pull it off. So I get this probably isn't as verbose as some of the past strategic plans, but I think it captures it adequately and quite eloquently personally. And the grid that is is one of the attachments, I think that's that's where the rubber hits the road and shows you the things we've already got on the books and where they align. So happily, you don't see any empty spaces under category where we've given staff direction, and it doesn't plug into any of those somehow miraculously, we were already singing from the same songbook right after the election. So kudos to this council. Those are just my observations on it, and I'm happy to adopt it. And I look forward to those midterm reports as well as the the ones that happened throughout the year and get a report card on ourselves and the community clearly will hold us accountable. Because this is what we told them we're going to do this term. So let's do it.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. If there are no more questions here, I have Counselor Ball.
Yeah, I just have a quick thank you for adding the grant section. I like to see where all the grants have come and how much we've we've obtained so far, so I appreciated that part of it.
Thank you, Counselor Ball. Seeing there are no further questions, I'm going to read the motion. I'd like to thank council for their input. It's good to hear that having clarity to some of the questions regarding the process here with the consultant. I guess the biggest goal is to see how we we fare at the end of the two to four years in this process. So anyway, I have a motion here moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor Ball, that staff report CSR twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine councils twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-six strategic plan dated May third, twenty twenty-three be received. And that council adopt a strategic plan and priorities for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six as outlined in this report in direct staff to develop and implement the action plan initiatives. And that the strategic plan be published on the town's website and that council revisit the priorities midway through the council term. All in favor? That's carry opposed, seeing none, that's carried. Thank you very much for for that now. We are going to be moving on to the agenda. We are now at number thirteen, notice of motion. Are there any notices or motions from council? Seeing none, we will move on to item fourteen. Are there any general announcements from council this evening? Yes, we have counselor, oh, sorry.
I have a I have a whack of them, so I will yield the mic first to peers.
First, Counselor McDonald, you have a whack, too?
Well, not that I can report here. Just that I was able to attend the Culture Alliance Conference on April twenty-first at the Midland Culture Center, and it was a very successful event. And I wish to congratulate the organizers. The speakers were motivational, the panel discussions were enlightening, and I think everyone left there having had been educated and enthused. So that's it.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor East?
Thank you, Your Worship, Deputy Mayor. I don't know if this is a spot for, but I just I had a quick question that I didn't have an opportunity to ask you earlier. And I'm just worried that it might have gotten washed out when we had that meeting with Jim. But a couple of months ago, the Transit Committee asked for a report to be looked into for the possibility of extending our bus services out to Palm Beach. Do we know where that is? Because it is kind of time sensitive to take advantage of it for Midland residents.
Our acting C A O, can you?
That there was discussion, but there was never a notice of motion from council to consider that. So nothing's happened with that. So that would need to be a notice of motion.
I thought I I put forth a notice of motion when Sherry was here. And that's what I'm worried about is it kind of got lost over. I that was a meeting, I believe, that got canceled partway through, so I'm not sure it actually got on the floor.
Are you okay with Counselor East if you send something in?
Just because it is kind of time sensitive for Midland residents to benefit from transit from Midland to Palm Beach, especially once we get in the summertime. So that's why I kind of wanted to put some pressure on it for this month to be looked at. So if we can, if I can get your help with it, maybe if we can push it so that we can look at it for June now?
Acting C A O?
Procedurally, if the chair wishes to back up to the notice of motion section where notices were asked for, that the counselor puts his notice of motion on the floor. Because there, you know, a proper report would need to be written for for this. And I'm not sure if we can get to the May twenty-fourth meeting, but again, a notice was never given for staff to do work on this.
Thank you, acting C A O. I'm going to ask Counselor East to maybe do a notice of motion so it's on record and action will be taken. So if you'd like to do that, I'd ask that you send her a notice of motion and just verbally say it now and then provide something to the staff regarding that matter.
So if I could set forth a motion to have a reporter study done to look into having buses extended their services on Saturdays and Sundays to Palm Beach and back just as a temporary trial to see if we it worked for the Midland residents to bring them out there and to bring Palm Beach residents back into our area.
Thank you, Counselor East. I believe staff has got that, and they'll make their recommendations when the report comes. Thank you very much. Are there? Oh, yeah, yes, we're going back to the general analysis. I have Your Worship.
I'll just do, I'll just say one thing. I want to do my announcements, but just further to this. So you put a notice of motion on the floor. We can't debate it tonight unless, and here's the air quotes, if council, the majority of us agree to set aside the rules of procedure, we can do a debate, and if the decision is to give direction to staff to have a report, there is probably all not possible for him to pull this off for the next meeting. But that will, at least it'll be three weeks sooner than waiting for the next meeting cycle. So we have that ability to do that. Technically, staff shouldn't be setting about any motions or doing any work to prepare until they've been given formal direction, which right now there's a three week egg timer you just turned over by doing a notice of motion verbally. If this council wishes, we shouldn't make a habit of this, by the way, just want to let you know it exists. If this council wishes, we can set aside rule of procedure. We can treat this like a live motion that had, as if it had been, you know, tendered with proper notice. We can debate it and to call a question on it and potentially give direction to staff to have a report, you know, maybe ready for the next meeting. Or we follow our normal rules of procedure, which is this was just tabled, and it will be on the agenda in three weeks' time where we then debate it and then give direction to staff if it passes. I just, that's the two ways we can go on this. And am I accurately, it's not something we should do as a rule, because nobody knows about this. It's not on the agenda, but we do it in more exigent circumstances, which one could argue based on time, this might qualify, but I'll leave that in the hands of of council here, just someone to let you know procedurally.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I believe I I believe it was just the latter that you spoke of, that it's in motion, we don't do any discussion until we get the report, which is going to be in a couple of weeks. That's my understanding. But anyway, I have Counselor Ball.
Yeah, I think that because that was obviously a unique situation where the meeting was paused and that it did get lost under the rug there, didn't get brought up at the next one. I think you, as far as I can see, did put that motion in and that should have come back. So I'm okay with going ahead and doing that motion now and directing staff, because we're not making a decision. We're just directing staff to bring something sooner than we we would see it if we saw it just the motion come back in three weeks. So it's just in times, terms of time to get Palm Beach sorted, like I would rather have it sooner than later.
How's the acting C A O respond?
Just procedurally here, if we could, you know, continue with the the general announcements, and then when we get to motions for which notion, motion, notice was given, we have one already. And then if council wishes, there'd be a procedure to a notice to waive procedure to put this other notice on the floor at that time. So that would be my my suggestion. So let's finish announcements, go into community of the whole or certain into, sorry, into formal council, deal with the first notice of motion that's on the floor and then do a a motion to change procedure.
Thank you for that clarity, acting C A O. So we will proceed with the general announcements, and then we'll address this matter after the fact. Thank you very much. So Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. I had the pleasure of volunteering some of my time at the at the Midland Curling Club, Mr. Graham J. had called me and for their closing bond spiel. And I got to watch some curling and and or some early morning coffee for the for the volunteers and the members there. One thing I will say is, although the curling rink is, you know, not closed, but the curling season is over. The curling rink is still open for business, although you may think it's closed. So they rent out their facility, and I'm just putting a shout out there. If you, anybody's looking for rental space to contact the Curling Club, they could use as much help and, you know, funds to fund all their maintenance issues that are going to be coming down the the pipe in in years to come. So if you're looking for, I'm sure they they can be very competitive. And and so if you're looking for something that's in your budget, just give the Curling Club a a quick shout out and see if they can accommodate your your event. And one other announcement. It's a celebration, actually. It's a family member of mine passed away on on Monday. He was Mr. James Pantos. For those of you may remember him, he had the Horney family drive in who where it's actually, it was a little spot in the middle of a parking lot, just off the on off of King Street, just in front of the little general convenience store where he had a little pizzeria shop. And, you know, everybody loved his cooking. A generous man, loved the kids from here on Park who would come in in for their lunches for their fries and gravy. And most notably, he was well known for his homemade famous rice pudding. So on Friday, there will be you know, it's just the funeral service, and we're all going to say our last goodbyes at the Greek Orthodox Church in Berry. But coming back home in that very spot where the Horney family drive in was situated, it no longer is right now, but there will be a wreath in there. And if you're driving by, give him a, you know, a quick honk. And and those of you who knew him and those of you who didn't, that he'd appreciate a farewell. We lost a good man and a strong, small business leader in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Meredith. Any other counselor before I go to to the mayor? Seeing none, Your Worship?
Thanks. Just condolences to you and your and your family. Thanks, uh just condolences to you and your and your family for the loss. And I'll try and get by and at least honk. I got a few. Sorry, you don't, I often usually I try and have one or two, but I actually have quite a few tonight. Just quickly on the cultural event. Uh at the cultural center, uh I was invited along with their um heads there to to make some opening comments, which was wonderful. But I did want to speak to the fact that I, right after I made my opening comments, I darted out of there and I missed. Unfortunately, the first event, which was I was so looking forward to and that that was uh Terry O'Reilly, who I'm a big fan of. And I could listen to him, you know, read the phone book actually, but uh at any rate, I had to go uh to do the top hat ceremony, which was equally. You know, rewarding, but I just wanted for the people that saw me go and give opening remarks and then duck out of there. That's where I went. I was at the top hat ceremony. Which followed it immediately. So I just, that's my uh my explanation for my quick vanishing act. I pulled myself out of the hat. Coming up on Saturday, May twenty seventh, uh free for kids of all ages is the Public Works Palooza. And you'll see signage for this around town and in on our website. It's in celebration of National Public Works Week. It's at the Sports and Rec Center parking lot from ten AM until two PM and has hands-on learning and getting up close with town vehicles. Hopefully, I think the police cars will be there too, so there'll be some sirens and stuff you can play with and lights. Uh and all of the big works trucks will be there from operations. So there's going to be information about town services and how our water systems work. Uh Midland Fire, of course, will be there with a, man, they got good sirens and air trucks. The OBP and the paramedics. Uh Cool FM will have a tent with giveaways. There'll be games and music, interactive displays, draws, prizes. Butter tarts, just getting a moved up for uh June tenth and lots of snacks and it's on the community calendar. So. Uh that's Saturday, May twenty seventh. Put that in your calendar. It's a family event at the Sports and Rec Center parking lot outside. Also, on the twenty seventh and the twenty eighth, so Saturday and Sunday is the North Simco Treasure Days. This is that time when you get a hall pass to put junk out at the end of your driveway and hope that someone comes and picks it up. Now, I say junk tongue in cheek because all kinds of really good stuff gets put out um along with some junk. And uh the rule is it's out for that weekend. People will come by, collect what they like and leave behind what they don't. When it's the evening of the twenty eighth, please bring it back in and don't leave it out so our town don't looks terrible. Um and then take it to the transfer station or Goodwill or whatever you'd like to do with it. So but it is an opportunity to find new homes for your unwanted household items by placing them on the curb Saturday at eight AM. Unclaimed items need to be removed by five PM on Sunday, May twenty eighth. Uh you can snap up unwanted items and vintage finds. In in sister shared within townships. It's great when we we get on board together. Midland, Penetang, Machine and Tay are all doing this at the same time. So you can make a road trip out of it. Hopefully, the weather is good. And again, it's check out our community calendar on our new website and it'll show you all this information. Next up is. The Smile Cookie. This is for the people at TV Land. So I, these aren't the actual ones decorated, I don't think, but. Hospice Roney is the recipient of Tim Horton's Smile Cookie Campaign that's running from now to May seventh. So uh when you go through for your daily fix, um and don't just shop Tim Hortons, of course, because lots of other amazing coffee options in town, but. Do go through and get your, at least your smile cookie. All the proceeds, all of it stays locally at Hospice here on you. And uh it's it's super important. So Smile Cookie. That one's for the for the newspaper. If they take a silly screen grab, there we go. So uh next is our community safety survey. Until, which is running until May fifteenth. So the new Midland Police Services Board that just formed and met for the first time. Got a quick uh wake up that the OPP needs to have our wish list for their strategic plan. Similar to what we just passed tonight, uh but they need it by May seventeenth. Now, we didn't have another meeting scheduled that quickly, so we we put through together a meeting, but we also threw together a public questionnaire. So it's a survey monkey. For those of you who've used the Survey Monkey platform and the board has put together. Um a short questionnaire and it's asking you to rank how safe you feel and priorities of for policing and. To, you know, the things we should be focusing on, whether it's downtown safety or drug dealing or drug using, uh homelessness. Uh you know, theft, assault, all that lets you rank it. And this, your input is absolutely critical because we're going to take this input. And we're going to share it with the OPP and that will be our submission for Midland into their strategic plan for North Simco Policing out of Southern Georgian Bay. So now there's a big long URL, which you'll never remember if I write it out to you tonight. You'll find it on our town website. It's in the news section on the town site, or if you're handy with a pencil, I made a short URL for you. So if you go to short URL dot C A slash MPSB. So short S H O R T URL dot C A slash MPSB, which is Midland Police Service Board. That will take you to the big long URL, which is our our Survey Monkey survey. So council. Please, you're included in this. Make sure you visit that and fill in your uh your information. The only personally identifiable information it asks. Is uh the agenda you identify as and your age group. That's it. The rest of it. Um there's a simple question at the beginning. It says, do you live or work in Midland? If you say, you know, no to neither of those, it takes you to the thanks, but we really care what you have to say. Um you know, because we really need to focus on the people that live and work in town. Uh so that then will dump you into the survey. So. That's how it's built and please help promote that. If those of you on social media, you'll find links on my page. Please just share. Uh I think we have like a hundred and fifty or so, a hundred and seventy responses already, which is incredible. Because it's had next to no promotion, except the newspaper did. They did me a solid and they did an article on it. So let's hope we get lots of responses and we can feed all of our community safety concerns to the OPP's new strategic plan. And hopefully we welcome our new detachment commander in the next week or two. We're just waiting on the announcement of who. Who ended up at the top of the pile in the in the rankings. Oh, I got lots for you. Um next, next Friday, I am in Brampton. At the auto mayor's meeting, didn't even know this was a thing. Uh I guess it hasn't happened through COVID, or maybe this is the first. It's a first for me anyway, and I'll be there to discuss common challenges with all the other municipalities, most of them far larger than us. Who have and host businesses that relate to the automotive manufacturing sector or the parts manufacturer. And as Midland is blessed with many such um manufacturers in our community still. Uh I am working with EDCNS to try and collect input from those manufacturers to bring down their concerns. So I can share those as I commiserate with the other mayors from uh in this auto mayor's meeting. So. Just, I'm on the road a lot, doing things with the town, but this is kind of a different one. I thought I'd share with you. And last but not least, tomorrow is May fourth. And may the fourth be with you.
Thank you, your worship, for those announcements. That concludes, I guess, uh general announcements, unless I missed somebody. No, I haven't. Okay, I probably need some clarity on this, whether we need a motion to revisit the motion. Uh notices of motion. Um maybe Madam Quirk, can you clarify that if we need a motion to revisit? Our difference.
I'm sorry.
Uh Deputy Mayor Conton?
Yes.
Yeah, you'll close committee of the whole because it will be in a formal session. So you can just.
Just close then. Okay, thank you. Well, we're gonna uh move on. Thank you very much. Uh I do have a motion to close committee of the whole into resume formal council session. I have a motion moved by councillor Post, seconded by councillor Meredith. That the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you very much, uh your worship. You have the floor.
Thanks. I've got a motion moved by councillor Bald, seconded by councillor East, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of May third, twenty twenty three be adopted as resolutions at council. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And I'm sorry, I did, I had all my my announcements on my screen, but I I forgot to put one on there. May fifth, after Star Wars, Star Wars Day, is uh Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women Day. And there will be announcements on the town site and you will see red dresses. And there is a lot to learn and I've already missed my time to. Orate any further on it, but I didn't want to call it out and it is an important day. Uh we have a very large culture in our community of M T and First Nations. And uh this is a big deal day. So if you don't know what it's all about, just Google MMIW. All right, next. Motions for which notice was given. So seventeen point one, we have a motion moved by councillor McDonald and it needs a second or to get on the floor. Oh, did you? Go ahead.
Uh before we move that, we're going to discuss. Uh their east's motion under motion to adopt actions of the committee. Oh, no. Never mind.
We we're going to do it at the same time, but I was going to do yours first because you're actually on the agenda. And we're going to sneak his in. Unless you'd prefer to do the other one first, it makes no difference procedurally.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. So you do have an emotion for which notice was given and to get it on the floor, I need a second or so. I have councillor. Meredith. And I'll read it, get it on the floor and let's get talking. That an opportunity be created for the town of Midland to host a symposium with local social agencies to address our unhoused population of Midland. And downtown core concerns. Councillor?
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Um the Association of the Municipalities of Ontario stated. That homelessness has reached disastrous portions in Ontario with devastating impacts on people, communities and businesses. Across the province. AMO states homelessness is a challenge felt most by local governments. Here in Midland, there are many agencies with various implemented strategies. The proposed symposium could make us all aware of the programs presently being offered and learn from each other. Provide support for each other and recognize common practices. Research feasible solutions and possibly share financial resources or make grant applications as a team. But most importantly, hopefully the symposium could establish a cooperative community commitment. To reduce the impact of homelessness and lessen the downtown safety core concerns, the downtown safety concerns. We just passed our Midland Strategic Plan and one of the goals were to en- enhance town safety. Advocate for social programming to meet the town's needs, a drop-in center, warming center. So. This could be discussed more at a symposium with all our community. Agencies and also. I'd um in the twenty twenty-three budget, we supported launch of downtown attainable housing. Community Improvement Plan, a hundred and fifty thousand was carried forward from twenty twenty-two. I was thinking that perhaps we could repurpose that funding for this symposium. So I'm asking my fellow, and by supporting this motion, Midland can take a lead. So I humbly appeal to my fellow council members to support this motion and I request a recorded vote. Thank you.
I, yeah, I'm sharing this, aren't I? Isn't this ridiculous? Sorry. It's a smile cookies. I've OD'd on them today. Thank you for bringing this motion forward. Uh this is something that they are, I, because we, because we do this normal way. I've seen this notice motion for the past week on the agenda and I happen to be downtown Toronto today at the homelessness symposium hosted by the AMO. And I managed to bump into Mina Faias Bagad, who is the county's general manager of social community services. So he is in charge of the homelessness of portable housing file. And he's got a fantastic team. We've had great open conversations right since uh my first visit to county. So. We got talking about this very motion that I I suspected was going to probably pass with too much, without any struggle this evening. And said, okay, county, how can you support us? Because our staff time is uh at a premium. Uh you know. We're all constantly in a state of flux and churn. I don't think an official announcement came out today, but there's an another change that's happened in our organization. So. To be fair to staff and because affordable housing and the uh issues with community safety relating to homeless and homelessness. Is really all in the county's wheelhouse. I asked Mina, Mina, how can you help us out with this? And he basically threw himself at me, like he he loves doing these kind of things and he wants to, and he's volunteered with his team. To help lead this and organize it. What he needs from us is space. So I quickly volunteered to Sports and Rec Center. And probably some coffee and timbits or something. Um but they're happy to try and circle the wagons and get all of the stakeholders involved. I committed to helping where I could, making phone calls and, you know, helping to arrange it. And then my next question was, after I was, you know, thanking him profusely for helping us out on this, assuming it passed, I said, when? And realistically, even with the constraints that the county has, the best time for them to be able to plan and get this launched would be the second week of September. So I I know it feels like, wow, September, I know that's so far away. But when you consider the logistics of putting something like this together and getting all the moving pieces together and all the stakeholders in the same room. Advertising this, getting the public to come. Uh it actually seems reasonable to me. So I just want to let you know that I did a bit of background work in anticipation of this motion tonight for you. And the county is all in, uh as they have been all along. And um along with. That bit of delay, that that breathing room to get this pulled off, there's more funding that's coming from the province. It's being channeled directly into things like supporting the guest house shelter and and funding them for day staff and day programming. There's already a pilot happening right now with that funding for mobile um outreach work. So there's a lot of neat things that are happening and they'll give that a chance for it to happen over the summer. And then we'll have the symposium in the fall. So I'm hoping council is okay with, you know, assuming we're going to pass this. Setting a uh aspirational date for this around the second week of September. And then my commitment and that I'll be working with uh the county and liaising with staff as needed, but try not to put too much burden on them. And we'll try and get this thing uh ready to advertise late summer and pull this off in September. So I fully support this motion. If you hadn't brought it, I would have, I probably would have waited a bit longer because I wanted to try and figure out when we could pull this off. But I'm glad you brought it tonight. And uh as I say, the county, where a lot of these responsibility and the funding comes from, is a hundred percent on board. As well, and they look forward to the opportunity in Midland. So that's that's my input on this. And uh councillor Bolt.
How much is it gonna cost? Do you know?
If we do in kind, which is we're giving, you know, space at the Sports and Rec Center. I mean, it's never, nothing's free, right? So we, people have to clean it before and set it up and then clean it after and tear it down. There is a a cost, but it won't be something that hits the budget. It's just kind of what they do. Uh normally, we would rent the hall for an event and we would reclaim those costs through those activity-based costing. But in this case, I would suggest that we, you know, eat that cost internally. Uh if it needs to be put against a cost center, which it probably would, it would probably go against council's cost center and that that magic pot that I. I referred to earlier. But internally, they'll they'll figure out how it works, but there won't be. We don't, I don't believe we need to set aside like eight thousand dollars, something for this this event. We're really just giving up space and the staff time to host it. And whatever the coffee and timbits or snacks uh that go with, you need something to lure people to these events. So. Councillor Ball.
Uh thank you. Just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward. I know we've had a lot of discussions about it and. Uh I think that it's a great way to collaborate services. I think that having collaboration of all of these agencies. And being able to see who's doing what and how they can facilitate other members of of their. Uh agencies to other agencies and how, who's duplicating services. I think that it's beneficial to all organizations. I think that Midland definitely should be on the forefront of organizing something like this and being able to. Ex- accept some of that responsibility back onto us and allow that facilitation to happen in a better flow. So I I appreciate you bringing it forward. I'm a hundred percent on board with it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh thank you, your worship. I would like to thank Catherine, or I'm sorry, Mayor, not Mayor. Councillor, councillor McDonald for bringing this up because it is an important issue uh that deals with a lot of uh communities. I I think that um in order to move forward, I think bringing the different partners together. Will require a process and procedures to to see this uh be a success, I think, developing in terms of reference. Although it is a county responsibility, I think we're acting with our own initiative by taking this to. Uh various communities and dealing with our own issues here in Midland. So. Uh I think in order for this to be successful. Uh something needs to be drafted up and say, what are the outcomes and what are the terms of reference for the success? And what are the long-term goals in terms of what are we going to approach this? So. I support the idea and uh I like it and I think if we get our um. Uh, terms of reference together, it'll be a better approach to being a success.
Any follow up, councillor?
Just in reference to that. Would it be appropriate to uh, appoint an ad hoc committee? In regards to getting this symposium off the ground? With. Myself, I know I've I've done some research already on um. Looking into a facilitator, I would like to to follow up a bit with that. Don't know whether we need a term of reference. It is just a symposium. But I think we definitely do need a very strong agenda and a very. That's the word I'm looking for, for the facilitator, somebody that. Will guide us through the agenda. And just deciding who to invite. And making sure that, yeah. So. I don't know whether we want to appoint. An ad hoc committee to get this symposium off the ground.
Well, we could uh, initiate, perhaps, I mean, it sounds to me like this is your baby. And I mean, it matters to all of us, but now if this is something and you also are a county alternate. This might be a good opportunity. I'll flip you the contact information for Mina. Why don't you make first contact? And we can talk about this offline and you can take the lead on this. And then if we need to form a committee, if it needs to expand in scope, we can always um, do that informally. Councillor East.
And I wanted to thank you, Catherine and Bill and the County of Simcoe for spearheading this. Um, I fully support it. You know, I I think even myself, I needed to have my heart softened a little bit. And um. In growing. You know, instead of being a part of the problem, what you're doing is you're creating a solution. So I I commend you for that and I thank you and. Uh, I, that's, I'm all on board.
All righty, with that, I'll call the question then. Everyone clear on the motion? All right, all in favor? Oh, and recorded vote, you're right, sorry. Madam Clerk, let you do your thing.
Thank you, your worship. Okay, council, you've heard the motion. When I call your name, please respond with either yes or no. Councillor Arbald. Deputy Mayor Conton.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Hmm, yes.
Councillor East.
As the great Bill Gordon said earlier, for shizzle my nizzle. So, yes.
Councillor Prost.
Yes.
Councillor Meredith.
Yes.
Councillor Jay Ball.
Yes.
And Mayor Gordon.
Yes.
Okay, so there's eight yes, zero no, motion is carried.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. And that was in reference to Snoop Dogg teamed up. He's trying to get the Ottawa senators. Anyway, it's, yeah, we were, we were having the news before the meeting. Think I dropped a shizzle then. So, thank you very much. All right, so we need to waive our our procedural policy in order to get this next, oh, this is the. There we go. Sorry, I thought this was the motion. Fantastic. All right, so I I'll move this. I guess I can't. I shouldn't do that if I'm chairing the meeting. Councillor Ball, you're gonna move this? Yeah, second by Deputy Mayor Conton. The council waived the rules of procedure to allow for a new motion to be put forward. This needs three quarters of us. To pass. That's gonna let us break procedure policy and deal with a new motion that no one's ever heard of until tonight. Right now. All those in favor? All right, we got our majority.
I just would like to comment that I supported it only because of the medical emergency that happened. On March twenty-second and it got lost. Otherwise, I'm pretty stickler for procedures.
All right, councillor East, we do, we're gonna need this wording. So would you like to, or have you already got something? Wording ask over there. Very good, madam clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, so the wording we have is that staff bring a report to council on the feasibility of having transit service extended to Palm Beach and back to Midland on Saturdays and Sundays. So just for the summer months.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty in February, but not that pretty. All right, councillor East, so I'll give you the mic and um. Lead your case.
Thank you. Do you want a background of what the transit? No? Okay. So it would just, what we were thinking was um. Maybe starting May two for weekend till the long weekend in September. Or till Thanksgiving? Sure.
Mr. Campbell.
Now, I'd like to pass it to uh, Mr. Flannery to talk about. Trying to staff uh, such a request.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We threw your worship uh, to councillor East. Um, if I'm clear to is it that you're looking to add an additional route? In addition to the two that we have. Currently, one in Midland and one in Penetague. Or is it that you're looking to extend hours beyond existing hours now? Only at that time before and after, just point of clarity before I'll go on.
Councillor East.
To your worship. Uh, what we were proposing or wanted to look into is possibly. Having it. Extended from, say, Gironia Mall or downtown Midland to Palm Beach, and it would just be during the normal regular hours of transit. So, you know, say. Eleven o'clock. One o'clock. And five o'clock or whatever constraints falls in that. To add to the current. Route.
Okay, um, to your worship. Um, thanks for the clarity there. So that would be in a route in addition to. Uh, what we currently have. So right now, uh, just to to educate council to is is. In those two routes right now. Essentially, there on a Saturday, there's no Sunday service, right? Currently, it's only a Saturday service. That service is, it comes with an eleven hour shift for the drivers on a Saturday. It's one driver that comes in per shift. Currently, those are very difficult to staff. Um. And uh, uh, between the two routes, we employ four full-time employees. Their uh, full-time employment is covered between Monday to Friday during the regular shifts. So it's often uh, uh, almost always that the case that we're having to staff the Saturday shifts with some of the part-time drivers. Um. So uh, and and the part-time drivers is part of their employment. Really, there's no. Um. The way hiring goes these days, one is it's very difficult to to attract. Uh, and and retain drivers. Uh, two. Um. You know, as part of their employment, there's no um, guarantee of their availability. Um. So it's already, given the hours that we we operate on the on Saturdays, difficult to staff right now. Um. And then second, uh, you know, beyond the staffing, uh, another issue is is uh, equipment. So there are currently only four buses. Um, that make up the Midland Transit, Midland Penetague, excuse me, transit system. Um. So two would already be out on the road and. Um, you know. It's quite frequent. Um, that. A minimum of one bus seems to be in the shop. Almost at all times. Um. At quite frequently, it becomes two out of the four buses. Um, that are in the shop. And that would mean one isn't even available. Um, to provide an additional service on 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 any given day. Um. So again, if it were a Saturday and a Sunday. Um, it would be even more difficult to to staff than we already are currently facing. And then again, the equipment limitations that we have. Uh, would really add a significant challenge. Um. So I I just wanted to kind of elaborate on that a little bit to to educate everyone uh, with currently. How we operate, what that looks like. And again. That Saturday shift is an eleven hour shift for anyone that does come in uh, to work. So it's, it's really already a long day. Um. And they, again, are roughly hour loops. So it's really. A struggle to to time things as well perfectly so that people are. Are able to transfer at the right time from one bus to another. Um, and then. Really, as a last point is, we're, we're currently in negotiations with our partner municipality. So introducing additional services. At this time would further complicate those negotiations. I just wanted to throw all of that out there. Thanks.
Any follow up? Sounds like it's complicated.
It does sound like it's complicated. So here's the thing. Palm Beach made it so that. Midland and Penetague don't have the ability to really use it. And there's so many families out there that don't have cars and don't have the ability to get up to Palm Beach. So to extend. A route twenty minutes, takes ten minutes to drive there, ten minutes to get back. Even if we did it twice a day. I think it's well worth it to look into because. I really, from the conversation with that I had with Tiny and Penetague. I think it would, we feel that it would really open opportunities to let our residents use Palm Beach. Without having a hassle of trying to find. Parking. I mean, here's the thing, we've been using Palm Beach since we were little kids. And then all of a sudden, over the last few years, we couldn't use it. So what we're doing now is we're providing a service for our residents. To be able to use Georgian Bay. That's all we want to do, even if we can just look at one day a week, which would be Saturday, just for a test run. To see if it's even successful. I think it would be worthwhile. The other good thing is that we would be bringing people from Palm Beach. Into the mall area or downtown area. And they have the ability to shop with us. So. This is kind of the thought process with the transit uh, committee. Just to wanting to extend it and and give our local area residents the ability to use Georgia Bay like they used to be able to. So even one day, looking into it one day, I can't see it really hurting an extra ten minute drive.
Mr. Campbell, some follow up?
Uh, and this is why a report would be required to be written to fully lay out all these uh, concerns. Uh, that we would have for council. So if this, if council, you know, uh. Dylan's comment was, you know, feasibility is very low, but if you want us to write a report. Uh. We'll try and have for the next meeting, otherwise it'll be June uh, fourteenth that we'd have a a report to.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh. Thank you, worship. I think uh, the C A O just kind of answered some of my questions, but I think. What we need to look is is the need and the statistics regarding the numbers for the usage. That's fairly important. Or could there be uh, a pilot to to test it out to see if uh, if it's worthy to continue with it? But the the biggest part is the the dollar value that's going to be incorporated. It's going to probably cost more than. Uh, but we don't know what the numbers are. So I think in your study, we need to have those statistics to verify. Yeah, whether it's going to be yes or no. I think that's just basically our comment.
Councillor Meredith.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. So in um, in the report, um, I guess we could. Request the the least amount of. Um. Financial burden, I guess you can call it to the. Uh, to the residents. So if it's one day a week, uh. Maybe uh, starting off at one drop off, one pickup. Uh, whether it's, you know, if you're gonna go to Palm Beach for the day, you're probably gonna spend five hours out there, at least six hours. So if it's eleven o'clock to pick up at five, then that's probably the the least impactful. And then you can take it from there. So as long as we get. The bare minimum on that report um. That we're looking at, that would be. That would be my request in that report. Thank you.
I'll throw a few things in there. So of course. This is a service level enhancement, right? This is really, this belongs in budget time because there. There will be expense to this. This is not uh, an inconsequential request, what we're asking. And we're leaving our jurisdiction, so we don't even know if that changes our. Insurance, because now we're driving through tiny, I don't know, but there's, this is why we need a report. Things in the report would be, you know, this isn't costed. So what's it gonna cost us? Would we charge for this service to the residents? Would they use their Midland bus pass or would it be be dropping a fiver in? To a bin or a bucket when they go in? Does it have to be a? Uh, one of our big buses or could we, you know, get a school bus? Um, whatever you call it, when you rent a school bus to take places, you know, like for shuttling and. Like a paid duty school bus thing on the weekend. Is that an option? Uh, taxis, Uber, rideshare? Uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of things and options that would come on this report, I think. But ideally, this would be something. Although it seems simple. And on its face, let's just rent a school bus, right? And let's run it. Maybe it'll be empty, maybe leave full, we don't know. Uh, but this would be something realistically that we should. If we want to get staff to do the report now, we could, or we could save this. We were talking about it. You've talked to Tiny and Penetague. So have I. When I was at the log sawing thing in Springwater, we talked about this exact same thing in between downpours. And they're all on board with the two. So there's a possibility we could be looking at some financial sharing because it benefits our, at least Penetague and Midland benefits us, benefits us more than does Tiny. So but Tiny seemed, you know, the two people I spoke to, the mayor and one of their councillors, seemed like it was a good idea. So we could have some breathing room. If we didn't task staff right now to write this report, and we have all this other stuff going on. We bring this as a service level enhancement in the fall. When we start talking about uh. You know, budget. You put this in, staff then responds with these kind of things without needing a report request. And then we can mull over the service delivery and then give them a chance to talk to the neighbors and come up with a way to. To cost it and how we can, can't be a free service, I don't imagine, right? So all of these would come as part of that service level, that service enhancement request. So maybe. Maybe my suggestion is. It would mean voting this down tonight, okay? But. After having the discussion and a commitment by yourself or other councillors to bring this forward to our budget process where it truly belongs. And let's seriously look at that because I think it's a great idea. How do we pay for it? And how can we cost share? Those are things I want to look at. Uh, because I I agree. So that that would be my suggestion for tonight would be to, let's not. Pile this onto staff right now. And let's vote it down and then. Commit to revisiting it during a normal budget cycle. Uh, but again, just my suggestion, those are my my thoughts on it. Councillor Ball.
I was just wondering if we could maybe have the report not necessarily at the next meeting, but before budget, because then we're actually looking at. What it costs and how we can share that cost with other municipalities. And hopefully, we've already had those discussions with them, but at least at budget time, we're able to know where we're sitting. And how much it actually costs to implement it. I'm not sure how we would talk about it and get a report. While including it in the budget without having that cost beforehand.
Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, excuse me, your worship. You did mention one thing that I forgot to mention. Uh. The licensing, it is illegal to cross municipal boundaries with a bus without a provincial license. So we have a whole licensing process we need to to go through. So uh, not that that's complicated, it's just there are rules around uh. Uh, you know, providing bus service without a license. So. To bring a report back prior to budget is certainly an appropriate uh, request.
Thanks. Well, then, then I I walk my last comment back. I mean, if we give direction to staff to put her to her work together with no expectation, it's coming back next meeting or next month. That it's in preparation for pre-budget discussions, that would be, give them some breathing room and a chance to poll the neighboring municipalities and. Look through these intricacies that clearly are part of this ask. Councillor East.
And I appreciate the guidance on that. I agree. I I I think that if we look at it in the grand scheme of things, it'll increase ridership. And I never wanted it to be free. I mean, if you look at a family of. Five people paying for a bus there and back. Um, I, you know, just like any other town or city that provides bus services, they pay for it. So the thing is, is that. You could have that bus loaded with families. Saturdays back and forth, paying for it. So nothing was ever going to be free. I was just saying, let's provide a service, let's let them pay. And if anything, it's going to increase ridership on our buses because more people will want to use it. Because once again. They can't park at Palm Beach. What we're doing is we're providing an opportunity for them to use our buses. And get to Palm Beach. So that was just the thought process behind the transit committee's conversation. So food for thought. I appreciate everything.
Councillor Meredith and then councillor Ball.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I just wanted to uh, um. Comment on your comment of that Tiny has, doesn't have much to gain from this. So we're, we're bringing residents from Midland to. residents from Midland to Tiny to spend some, some dollars there. So, uh, they do have, uh, everything to gain from this. So I just don't wanna get the thought that Tiny, uh, doesn't have to put skin on, you know, as you term it, skin in the game. Because they don't have anything to gain from it, but they certainly do. Thank you.
Counselor Ball?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, um, Mr. Campbell, you're saying we need a license to, we wouldn't already have that in, with Penetang being a, having to go back and forth there, we wouldn't have that or because they also contribute. That's not necessary.
Through your worship, we likely already have that license or should, but you know, we don't provide service in the tiny today. And that's why, you know, there is provincial bus licensing requirements.
And that would be additional to what we already have?
The licensing specifies the municipalities specifically.
Thank you for that clarification.
I can just add to that, while I was talking to, uh, the mayor of Penetang Machine, the, the service doesn't necessarily have to terminate in Palm Beach either. There could be, um, good reasons for it to leave a mall in Penetang Machine and head out the L.A. way. There's some beautiful beaches up there that aren't as congested. And you take the, that road right out. So there's a lot of different concessions that could stop that, but you know, we were also thinking about, well, geez, we can't have a bus going down Tiny Beach's road. It's such a narrow road anyway, so many, you know, cottages and it's blind spots and it's twisty and turny. So the route would have to be, you know, thought out so it's direct and easy for buses to travel and not dump everyone at one location. So I think, uh, staff look into this, give them the breathing room to come back with some options and what it's gonna cost. And if there's a cost sharing, will with Tiny, because I agree Tiny does benefit. Penetang and Midland, I think, benefit more in the equation because we, we're gonna get to use Tiny's beaches and Tiny already believes they have a lot, a lot of people there anyway, which is why they have the tight controls on parking. Just as a side note, I, we did talk about perhaps them loosening up their parking restrictions. If you think about like Doze Bay, if you go down that concession, you can't park for, well, basically to the hill. So, yeah, there's a lot of them where, you know, I think even there was an appetite from those counselors that, hey, maybe we could start pulling some of those no parking signs that were mostly put up through COVID. And you may not be parking at the beach, but at least you're not, you know, a country mile away from it. So there's lots of time to talk about this. It'll probably wouldn't happen, well, it wouldn't happen this summer. Um, it's a worthy conversation. And what I heard from Tiny and Penetang Machine is that they're willing to have the conversation. So that's, uh, that's half the battle right there. So we're not going in on alone. Deputy Mayor?
It looks like we're looking into a bigger picture in the report because basically it's gotta be a benefit from our part, not just for Tiny. Uh, with Council Meredith said, I think if we're gonna attract that, you gotta attract business back to Midland. So there's other, other ends of the two-way street here. It's not just one way. It goes, goes back and forth. So I think we need to conclude that in the study on, on the statistics regarding that, the marketing for that kind of opportunity.
Counselor East?
I just wanted to thank my fellow counsel for, you know, bending the rules for me just to put this through. It, it was just about helping families. So I really appreciate you guys, you know, taking the time to bend this one rule for me in the case of the, you know, gyms falling. So thank you, everybody, for just doing that for me.
All right, we clear on the question? Or perhaps, Madam Clerk, could you read the question one more time? We'll call the question.
If you could just clarify who the second or was.
Oh, you know what? I don't think we got there. Counselor Prost down at the end of the, both ends. We'll bookend this one.
Thank you. Okay, so to read the motion again, that staff bring a report to council on the feasibility of having transit service extended to Palm Beach and back to Midland on Saturdays and Sundays during the summer months.
Thank you. And we can all agree that that will appear sometime before the budget cycle. Although we haven't given you a firm date on it. Fair enough. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. All right, thank you, council. That's always good. Again, we try not to do this because the public hasn't had that week to review this and provide input to us. So we never know what kind of emails we're gonna get next, but I'm sure part of this process will be surveying or canvassing the, our residents to see what kind of appetite there is for this. All righty, up next, I have a motion moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Conton, that bylaw twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five being a bylaw to provide for a twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six multi-year accessibility and transit plan for the town of Midland be passed and enacted. And just for discussion, this is the one that was previously, uh, we didn't pull it, but we need to have it. So that's why we're passing it. And this will go to our active transportation committee once they form, if they form. Very good. All those in favor? It was carried. Next, move by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor Prost, that bylaw twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of this regular council meeting held May third, twenty twenty-three be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. And last but not least, moved by Counselor Bald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Conton, that this regular meeting of council adjourn at eight thirty-five P.M. All those in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.